Everyone, welcome all to our Board of Education meeting on Monday, June 11th, 2018. 7:05. Roll call please. Simmons?
First.
Nelson?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Correjas?
I'm here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Ford. President and, uh, we're off. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is our resolution, sorry, oh, a public hearing. Uh, open the floor to a public hearing regarding the transfer of funds to the Education, Operation and Maintenance Fund.
So move.
Second please.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? This will be done.
Questions, sir? Uh, so we are transferring, uh, a total of $3.5 million. Uh, and $2.5 from Transportation to Education and $1 million from Transportation to Operation Maintenance. This was the plan all along, and again, that was a little crazy for, a little crazy, and you had to let me transportation. I'm hoping this last year we have to do this for a while. Uh, so basically, we'll go on this floor to take action regarding your questions.
Okay. Any comments or questions for the board? Any comments or question from the audience? Okay. Can I have a motion please to close the public hearing regarding the transfer of funds to the Education, Operation and Maintenance Fund?
So move.
Correjas?
Yes.
Roll call please. Okay. Uh, Correjas?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
No.
Ford? Yes. The motion's passed, close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda, super recognition and presentation of our track students and partner.
Sir, please. Welcome, Mr. Eric Auguste up to say a couple of things about our track students this year. We'll recognize none of their accomplishments, but we have a number of them here today. We'll get all the pictures, certainly, and take picture of those students which I'll just see.
So, we had a really great season this year. We started out with our winter running club for the first time, uh, and we had our regular season. We came in a close second to Cole and Powell on our conference. We swept the sectional by up to 40 points at some of our levels. It was a crushing defeat for them. And hosted our sectional, so getting more track uniforms, and then did really well down at state, including one set of relay state medalists. So I see a couple track students out in the audience, so I've got the guys here, so if I could have Omari Mason come on up. Oh, it's a good one.
Okay, let's, uh, we'll try to move the podium first. All right, ready? Oh yeah, come on up, I'm gonna be three. One more. One more. All right. Great job. Thank you very much. You have a number of students who fall by, which is those team members, Mr. Gregory. Jared Thomas, Matthew Wright, Andrew Wedstein, Darius Vivianz, and Bennett Reich. The seven great girls, we had Haley Jordan, Avery Rastah, Lanier Farrell, Ayma Douglas, and Cameron Kearns. Eight great boys, we had Jafon Dovele, Martell Hines, Omari Mason, Chikara Swarman, Anthony Ootry, Jayden Scher, Derek RT, Jolanda Perry, Michael Shelley, Oscar De La Torre, and Fitz De La Torre. The eight great girls, we had Jada Thomas, Arjuna Gant, Kate McCole, Isis Phillips, Mary Williams, Isabella Advansina, and Alyssa Green. So, congratulations to all the students, we're very proud of their efforts, moving forward to the next.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, our audience comments, we do not have anyone who has signed up, so we may be moving. Next item, our community engagement committee. Is there anything to report?
I didn't. So we did have a meeting on June 6th. Thanks to everyone who came out, a very small meeting, but certainly it got a lot of talent, but we were primarily focused on the Fall Meet and Greet. Remember that's going to be on August 17th. Primarily, we were focused on the activities to expand the night. We're heading into our second annual Meet and Greet Back to School Event, and Flattery is, or, you know, competition's best form of flattery. We know our neighbors have already had their first annual, so we're excited to be just out there a little bit, we wish them luck, we may be able to share some advice with them on their first year. But as we move into our second year, it's really about how do we expand our offerings, try to get as many families and parents out as we can. We have some interesting ideas for staff members to have as many District 161 staff members out as possible. It's going to be, you know, a wonderful evening. We'll have our kids, we love our candidates, and we'll have our Italian ice, we'll hand out, so we're excited about that. Thank you, we'd like to Civil Dexa, and Aruba Woods, who have been our true parent volunteers all year, they have shared great ideas and really helped us with good advice, so thanks to both of them. Just a couple of two's that we'll work on over the next couple of weeks, and then we did add a meeting in July. I have the date in my camera. We had a meeting in July, just so we can touch base in the middle, because August will be here before we move. And so, the meet and greet, so we're excited about that.
Next item on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
Sure, so, as everyone knows, school year ended last Thursday, which was June 7th, and by that afternoon, and certainly to June 8th, our crews were hard at work, getting everything out of having a little school, because we had to begin working as soon as possible for everyone, so thanks to Scott, and Fran, and Dave Fox, and our entire crew of custodians, they really did a bang-up job right at the start of this construction season, we hope they'll keep their focus through the rest of the summer, but it's helped us get off to a good start. We'll have more on Heather Bill later in the meeting. And tonight, I'm really excited that we're recommending what is truly the final piece of the steam lab puzzle for spring animals, which is the construction. We have a planning meeting today with Mike Mitchell, Creative Systems, really just checked off those boxes to make sure that everyone knows exactly what's going to happen when we return in August, to make sure, again, that those pieces are in place, everything has been ordered, the work has been finished, our teacher has been trained. If you remember, we did hire Andrea Baby, the Golden Apple winner, to be the steam teacher at Spring Animals. I know she is incredibly excited, she's going to do an amazing job. So thank you to Dr. Ben Troch for her leadership, generated the steam lab, you know, there's a number of people who think we'll do that at a grand opening later in the fall. And then just finally, summer school beginning a week from tonight, that's at the Western Elementary School. Rebecca Williams and Jennifer Hartman are the co-principals, and they're just about ready to go. It's been a lot of hard work, but I think we have a good plan, they have been very diligent in the work that they've done up until this point. So thank you to them, but also the staff members who were prepared to take some questions. Let's hear that.
Do we know how many students have registered for summer school? Do you have a number?
Um, we're just under 200 right now.
How does that compare to last year?
Last year, we ended with about 356, I believe, and that included the virtual program.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the number for the year I gave you there?
We are just under 200 this year.
It was just, just over 200.
Just under 200.
I'm sorry, just, just, just under 200.
And can I clarify, is that, um, um, physical people in building, or is that also include the virtual?
That's both, that's virtual and in.
Okay.
The last is number four, was it 200 or 350?
Yes, 356, I believe that were the final number.
356 on the final number.
Okay.
You're welcome. You're very welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which are a number of consent agenda items for approval. I have a motion please to approve the consent agenda items as is presented. Because we put a personal, um, shirt on, but everyone's actually. Yes. Actually, we pulled out, we agreed a lot of them, have a lot of them. Um, okay, can I have a motion please to approve Minutes of Regular Board of Ed Meeting, May 14th, 2018, Executive Session Meeting, May 14th, Special Board of Ed Meeting, May 29th, 2018, Foyer Reports, and if you notice up under the Superintendent Reports, there's a, an item for a gift for fast times for $405, that also belongs under the consent agenda items. So we are approving three items, the minutes, the foyer requests, and the gift for the fast times. Can I have a motion please? So move. Any a second?
Second.
Roll call please. Okay, Briggs?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Correjas?
Yes.
Huckabee?
No.
Ford? Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda, discussion, the number of discussion items, the first one includes the strategic plan review.
So typically, we go ahead and discuss items on the first meeting of the month, but we do have a few good times, especially issues, and want to make sure that we're working through before the end of this school year, uh, certainly because we do have one more meeting left in the month, data is one of those. As we're working with Five Lab, we'll have our initial conversation on that, at our next meeting, we'll have our general dashboards from Five Lab, which is our data warehouse company, but our conversations tonight will help lead that discussion as well. We've also talked about setting measurable targets on our strategic plan, so if you like me, we would probably just kick out the four dots, so.
Yeah.
But we wanted to share information on five essentials for our schools, and then our spring gap data.
Good evening, everyone. So this year, our district schools took the Illinois Five Essentials survey, the elements that this survey has surveyed that measures, uh, took to measure school culture and climate based on several research-based factors, and it was administered by the University of Chicago. Schools throughout the state of Illinois take the, as I said, take the survey, and it was folded into, if you want, a piece of information card that becomes part of the local school resource. So the survey is based on 20 years of research from the University of Chicago, and it identifies five essentials that become instrumental in measuring school culture and climate and organization in schools. The five essentials are effective leaders, collaborative teachers, ambitious construction, involved families, and supportive environments. A little bit of background on what each of the five essentials mean. Effective leaders, um, they're indicators in the survey, questions that get to the educators around principal-teacher trust, setting titles for instruction, maintaining respect for school students. Collaborative teachers, points to teachers actively involved in decision-making in schools, their level, high-level commitment in the school, and if they're focused and purposeful professional development. Involved families, to involve families, does the staff build strong internal relationships with parents and community members, are parents being partners in learning with teachers, other students, and if parents have support and strength, and if they have the support to be a strength in the school community. There are two other essentials that, in the survey this year, are only measured at the junior high level. Are students in fourth and fifth grade participating in a pilot that deals with five essentials and ministered to fourth and fifth grade students that have questions around this, but those responses are not included as part of the report. And that is statewide, that's not just District 161. So those two essentials are supportive environment, supportive states, and nurturing the support and enabling environment for students, if they're student-to-teacher trust, and are teachers responding to students' academic needs. And then the area of ambitious construction for our classes, challenging and engaging for students, the structure of the classes, the pacing of the classes, and how all of those factors impact student learning. So all of the educators had questions aligned to them that would help us better point to areas of celebration, as well as opportunities for growth in the success of our schools. So, this graphic here is not our district's, this is just a stock image, and the actual survey shows you each of our schools' ratings. So, within each of those categories, schools are given a rating, and that's also an overall rating. So, schools given, are given an overall rating, well-organized, organized, moderately organized, or not organized. If I can go a little bit, I'll go back to that one in a second. So here you see the list of District 161 ratings overall, ranging from not yet organized to well-organized for two of our elementary schools.
Can I just interrupt you? Can you remind us again how often the five essentials?
Yes. It is given once a year, we did not take it last year, and schools can choose too often, it's not required every year, and there isn't often that we would have to take if we wanted to continue to give it.
Do you know how this compares to, with this, since it's not two years ago?
I would have to, we'd have to go back in the archives, I think, um, the ratings also changed from the previous administration of the survey, so it wouldn't necessarily be at the staff if that compares.
Oh, I didn't.
Yes.
The pilot, fourth and fifth grade, is that represented in, I don't get them, in the slide?
No, so the fourth and fifth grade student responses are not represented in the other school, not in.
Okay. Now, who, who responds to the survey? Is it everybody? Is it, you know, or just staff? Is it parents? Is it students?
Yes, so, a couple of different levels. So, uh, students are given the survey, and all of our students who were eligible to take the survey took the survey, did it during the school day, uh, and yes, this is the first year that we have been reporting that third grade students are part of the pilot. Uh, we also administered the parent survey, uh, we, this is the first time that our district reached the, we have to reach a 20% threshold in order to get parent, have a parent survey response included in your report. So this year, we did a really good job, we gave that 20%, so our parent responses are included in the survey. Additionally, um, you, teachers have an option to take the survey, you have to have 50% or more teachers to take the survey, or if you have teachers come, if you get all of our schools are above 90%, you're not worth it. Administerors should not take the survey, that is essential on the part of the five essentials team, because in their explanation, the survey is for principals to use in their school development, the early sort of.
And so, broadly speaking, how many, what percentage of students responded? Was it in their twenties, was it in the?
90% and above.
Oh.
Yeah, so we, we did it during the school day, so basically, any student who was there, so, who was in school, took the survey.
Right. And when during this year?
Anytime.
Is it typically given in December, or is it?
We have a range, a date range that we can choose, it's, I believe, the range this year was probably November to January, um, and we choose the, each district chooses the time that they want to give the survey, and that's the time we select.
And is that going to be the same timeframe, move forward so that it reflects one temperature reading?
Yeah, we could definitely consider that in our planning for the upcoming school year, um, there's a lot of factors that go into planning, from, you know, other things that are going on, and coinciding, math testing, or other things that are happening, and issues worldwide, but this, this time it seems to be, um, we don't have a really good administration done.
Okay.
Additionally, these ratings show you how our schools fell on each of the different five essentials, so effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involved families, supportive environment, and ambitious construction, again, only have rates for supportive environment and ambitious, ambitious construction for improvement. And that is statewide.
I could want to aggregate the data more and break it down by parent response as far as the teacher versus the students.
We could, we would have to take a look at, um, which questions, we might need to take groups of questions and hold them down, that's something that we can definitely do for each student, and get an overall, and get a response for, for each of those questions. That's definitely something that we expect schools to do, as they stay into survey results for our, and so we definitely.
They don't provide that through five essentials, so it becomes a, a byhand activity.
Is that a, a bycast possibility?
We could, we could get the five essentials data in a CSV form perhaps, so we might worth reaching out to, to the group to find out if we can access that data, because then we could upload it, so we could get the data that way, we could upload it and then tie it to the larger data sets, and then skyward, uh, really talk about some of these, so we can look into it, uh, to see what's possible.
And, just a little bit of discussion around surveying the opportunities for improvement. So like, overall, level taking all of our schools into account, we saw that the district felt that our families are very involved, which we absolutely know, um, we, overall, the schools were high in collective practices and strong sense of professional development. Of course, then each of the questions around those essentials, there are strengths and opportunities that we can dig deeper with. Um, and then also, our student responses for the quality of students in special in classes were, were consistently pretty good, um, and yes, this is one of the educators' quality of student discussion, we did have elementary data for those responses as well as student data. Opportunities for improvement, things that we want to dig in our school improvement planning as well with our leadership teams, and how do we help schools develop more of a collective responsibility for achievement and for excellence. Level of school commitment was across the board, something that we feel we could do better with, as well as supportive environment, whether it's the elementary or the junior high responses, any chances that our students are recording the environment is not supported, that's something we want to dig deeper with and make sure that we're addressing that systematically. Yes.
Is it possible that we could also see this in terms of, or do we?
Absolutely, yes, so in, do we, in taking out each individual report?
Yeah, just see, you know, just see, you know, like, school, you know, actually like that, really small families, but, um, you know, might be, might have some opportunities for collective responsibility, school-wide might be, the exact, I'm just curious to see.
Absolutely, and it's, again, as part of our school improvement process, and to develop our set plan for the summer, that would be something that all of our schools will do, to look more closely at their individual data and target the large areas that we feel like really need to be addressed, and have a long-range plan for targeting all of the areas. Uh, then additionally, just really wanting to show consistent improvement over time and follows between our schools, um, I think it's energy between our schools, of what's working around culture and climate, and what we're doing in our elementary schools that we can do more than the junior high level, um, close working in some of our elementary schools that other elementary schools are far from, really making sure that our systems are aligned with what needs to be addressed in some of these areas.
Another question, is, are these reports reflective of individual buildings, or do they also limit it to broader district, like, you know, consideration of, you know, across the district, you know, their collaborative practices, um, or, you know, what's, across the district, is it supportive environment, or is it more specific to, um, building, um, and then, and then average whole?
So this is a school-based survey, so the survey does not, um, quote unquote, review, and the reason for that is because it really is about, um, individual schools, the culture and climate can be so specific to that building, and helping principals develop their action or improve their specific context. What I think is the opportunity for us is really making sure that we're identifying the trends that we see across all of our schools, so that we can address those challenges.
And I would expect a great amount of breakdown from the board in their plans for discussion and improvement, because we would expect to see this data represented, it's gotten to other indicators that we need to measure effectiveness of our school-level implementation plan.
So the opportunities for improvement coincide with what was on the previous slide in terms of, um, the rating, organized, well-organized?
Yeah, so these, the opportunities for improvement coincide with taking a look at the responses that we had, the general responses that the principals had in each school survey, and trying to identify, um, trend versus individual schools. Again, individual schools will address all of their opportunities for improvement that may be associated to their.
And so, in the, so when, we see this, when, when principals bring those back to the board, will they, will there be specific items that show a direct relationship to these items? And I'm asking because, um, you know, how do you improve school commitment? I mean, so, so, I mean, I, I, we would need to have, I, it would be helpful if we have a better understanding of sort of how schools were planning to tackle that, and so as they are coming up, and what their plans look like, how does it directly relate to supportive or, you know, improving the environment, how does it directly relate to, um, collective responsibility? I mean, so, I think that would be helpful, because otherwise, um, we don't know whether or not, we don't know how you guys gauge whether or not removing the needle on the items or not.
Yeah, that's a great point. One of the things that I've been working on, and talking with colleagues, mine, obviously we're all able to know at the same time, uh, that have been able to move the needle for their schools, is really about taking it question by question, and really taking a look at, within these larger buckets, what specific questions need to be addressed. So within supportive environment, students have questions about, do they feel safe in the classroom, do they feel safe in college, do they feel if they have someone that they can talk to and still? Do they feel like they have someone that they can talk to and still can trust? Those are really where now that we can act on that specific question versus taking a look at statement and just sort of being too general about it. I think that's something that we can incorporate into our total. And I think there is...
That would be very helpful.
Remember, all these indicators are based out of University of Chicago. So there's research behind the agreements. In theory, there's consulting behind the agreements. And we can, and we can see that there's, there are steps behind these if we can look to them.
Um, okay. You may, we don't want to limit, it's okay. It's a small crowd today.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to stick, we were kind of meeting in one direction. Was it possible to understand from a detailed, uh, view of those high-level goals? Because when it says collective responsibility, what does that mean? You know, what are the questions that he mentioned there? Well, I mean, it does, this is very, very high-level. So it's very, very difficult to understand. What does that mean?
Are the questions available?
The questions are in the survey. So each school's survey has, um, the trends and the responses and range of the questions. So for example, if I can, um, around collective responsibility, some questions would be, um, is there shared responsibility among teachers and administrators for decision-making in the building? Are there strong teacher teams that collaborate frequently? That's the type of question that would be asked for shared responsibility or collective responsibility. Again, supportive environment, students were asked questions around, uh, do they feel safe in the hallways? Do they feel safe in passing periods? Do they feel like they have some adulting ability that they do go to that they trust? Those would be the types of specific questions to ask.
Is there any reason, well, when do these reports get made available to the school?
Um, at the end of this month, they will be, when they get...
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'm trying to figure out why we get the survey in December in the state of Illinois, which doesn't happen on our website. Not on the website. We have them. So when do we get them? They're public documents, right? Why would we need to circulate them as soon as we come? And I don't understand why there's this delay between when you guys get them and this need to be...
Yeah, so there are some stakeholders around them. We got them, I believe, I want to say February or March, we got the five of the schools. And there is a waiting period, probably between that time and May 30th, where the school can take a look and have to contact us before any corrections. So that's, they don't be giving it public until the end of June. That's when they will go up on the website. But in between that time, all of our buildings have met and discussed the survey results and the questions that were asked.
What kind of, I mean, we're not asking for any corrections. We're looking at this.
It would be like, for example, if the, the number of students in the building was wrong or, and the context information was wrong on the survey. But that doesn't mean that we can't discuss the survey amongst our building.
So the, um, the survey results will be posted? How, how do we make them available for the community to see?
So they will be made public by the end of June. We would have to discuss, you know, if you want everyone to see everything, why we couldn't post them on our website and share a link or have a meeting, community-wise, to discuss at each building. But officially, if you post it to the school department.
Well, I think it would be great to, I mean, it's very, it's good data. So it would be great to make the public aware. And this is, especially since everybody takes the time to do it. And it sounds like participation rate is high. So it would be great for the public to know that this data is available for the community. And then, you know, how would we want to discuss it? I'm sure the public would love opportunity to talk and ask more questions about the data.
I would express a reference for actually circulating the reports and relying on the publication of the Illinois Report Card website because, you know, if you go to the Illinois Report Card website, you know, you can see the summary. And if you're a different Illinois website, the Illinois Five Essentials website, the user interface is terrible and you're going to just download it anyway. So why don't we save Illinois Report Card as a step? So just give them the reports.
Bring it down to the school information.
Any additional questions on that?
Were there any surprises?
I think, I don't know, it necessarily surprises. This isn't the kind of survey that's a gotcha. It's the kind of thing that if you are in your building and you know the pulse of your building, or a principal's perspective, you know what's happening in your building, um, it should not be a surprise. Again, this is a building-based survey. So the opportunity for a principal or a leadership team to be surprised, um, is really not there. Because it asks me questions about day-to-day happening in your building. So for example, do we have collaborative teams that make decisions? That's either happening or it isn't. It's very hard to sort of, uh, fight authority area on that. And you get a sense of, if, you know, if a student is asked, do I feel safe in the hallways? Um, if overwhelming percentage of students are saying that, that's, that's not something that day-to-day in your building you'd be surprised by if you're talking to students and if you know what's going on. And there's other data that correlates with it in terms of referrals and incidents that are happening. Um, it's, it's not really meant to be a surprise. And I don't typically think it's a surprise.
My, uh, my thoughts on this, and I don't, I mean, I don't know exactly how this might be helpful. But words like "safe" to me have a whole host of meanings. And I think that you're taking differently by a number of people. I just had this conversation the other day that some kids, because they feel safe, are willing to do things that make other people feel unsafe. And so, you know, the level at which, you know, you know, keep going through puberty, might feel safe, is, is different from like maybe at high school or, you know, in grade school. There are really different expectations of what's going to happen that day. Um, and so I guess my only concern about, you know, dropping all of this onto the community, okay, here's the website, you know, there's, you know, this is really, is meant for, you know, people who are trained and have tremendous amount of experience digesting disinformation for professional purposes to build a school improvement plan. And I, I guess I would, I would hope that if we did make this open to the public that we are prepared as a district to explain, what do you mean in that word? You know, or what, this school's been around for 50 years. You know, I mean, any number of conversations, which, you know, I have, I understand because I've looked at this a number of years. And I can say, okay, I like how that comes, you know. But I can see how someone's interpretation of the vocabulary might really, you know, lead off the intended path. And so, and I, to answer a question about, you know, why don't we have this meeting is, is a big question in terms of transparency. But I, I think the logic behind, you know, allowing for these, um, this time period is to really give school leaders, teachers, communities time to really work through and get ahead of this, to understand it before, and really have a plan as opposed to, okay, we go see the test results, you know, I don't like this. And, you know, what are you going to do about it? Well, I don't plan it. Well, why not? You know, I mean, so I think that it would be very helpful if when we did broadcast this, that we, we do this with, we digest it. We have, we know what we need to do, and this is our plan for our community.
We can absolutely provide that context. I think what the, the survey does is it gives you helpful information to move forward. And I think that's the intent of the survey. It's not a, something to rest on. Um, all of our schools, they are for improvement in each of the areas. But I, I think it's a helpful tool to identify key areas that are research-based for school improvement that provide us the space and the information that we need to plan for.
Sure. And also, on the same note, you know, I've had conversations with other superintendents over the last four years regarding this in a variety of districts around Chicago and Illinois, where some people say, you know, this is a really great thing for the city of Chicago. This is a really great thing for this community. Uh, this other community, I think maybe this other measure might be, you know, more appropriate. So I, again, this is just a level of anticipating questions that might, you know, arise from it. It just really is meant to be something to help educational administrative professionals really, and, you know, craft their, uh, their, uh, their plans that we're just, you give a lot of context, as you said. Just so it's not, it's not going to blow up in somebody's email and go, oh, so what's this? I mean, going to more work.
I think the key is helping the community as well as board over the next few months as we talk for about taking the future plan and goals. It's part of the future. So, and so I think you have to remind people that this is, this is not all of that, all of what we are looking for. But it is the qualitative piece that provides additional confidence to us. So as you are getting, or whoever's going to start talking about NWA, and math scores, and what the performance looks like, we can introduce all different types of curriculum. But if we don't address all of these qualitative measures that pop up in the Five Essentials, then we won't see the entire improvement. So I think just contextualizing, helping people understand that the Five Essentials is a piece of, um, the data that the, the district is looking at towards how we need to forward. Okay, so are there any other questions?
So we will segue into talking about the current national. So our, we just recently closed our math bingo for spring. So we need a math assessment completed as well as a discussion on how students perform. So we remember these charts, um, the visuals and numbers are really hard to see compared, and everyone should have access to the reports as well. Um, but the visual is that the bar is showing what the observed growth was, so how our students actually did. And the diamond is showing where we were projected to be based on percentage of students that, that should meet their growth target. So just in general, we're talking about reading some celebrations that we observed or that we have more of our grade levels that have a majority of students who are meeting their growth targets. So in reading, all of our grade levels have 50% or more of our students that have their, their total percentage of growth targets for spring, um, which is really good because while we know that there's more growth that needs to happen, that's a good sign that we are starting to put the needle. Now, we have, all of our grades except one, we're going to be pursuing some of their growth targets. That celebration is also set with an opportunity because we know that we want all of our students to meet their growth target. That's always the challenge after the individualized assessment that is based on what that, it means that that time is what we continue to meet their needs. So that's always the work that has to be done. Yes.
Real quickly, can you tell us how, the growth targets are the, on the graphic, there are the diamonds that we're seeing?
That is where we were projected to be.
Okay.
And the bar is where we were actually.
And, um, so in terms of the, um, in terms of how the, uh, the growth targets are, are set, is that a national norm or everybody gets that target? Or is it that, um, is that based on student achievement? Is it based on, um, how a district does the previous year?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, the, the growth targets that you see here are based on how our students have previously performed. And the national norm is the grade norm. So the numbers that we usually look like, we usually look at like, what's the grade norm for sixth grade, for seventh grade, and so on. That's a difference.
Yes, so, um, so, and, because I noticed that on, on almost all of the fall to spring math scores, there's been a definite increase. Uh, significantly increased. Um, and particularly in school, in their, in their RIT scores. Um, and so, you know, I guess in terms of, well, maybe this fourth grade class didn't quite make their, um, their growth score. But I'm looking at the overall RIT score is actually higher than the previous year.
Yes.
Even looking at previous spring, it's higher than, um, the, the spring, the spring score as well.
So that's, those are two different things. Because nationally, our students, and we talked about this similarly in the fall, nationally, our students generally have a higher RIT score than the national average. Or in part, not all of our grade levels, but certainly in some. But what these are measuring is, are the percentage of students who met their individual growth targets. Um, so for example, at kindergarten, this July, we had, um, including NBA, a percent of our kindergarten students who met their growth target. Um, in fifth grade, I think 4% of our students met their growth target. So it's always, it's, they're, they're two different things.
How long have we had these reports?
This report here is about three or four days. We just put...
Okay, there's a lot of information here.
Yes.
I'm used to seeing it. So I've gone through and kind of pulled out some initial observations of my own. Has your team been able to craft any initial first glance takeaways at what we're looking at here? Or is it, it's too early for you to know?
There's, so we do, we've done our initial discussions. So each school takes a look at how they're, how they did and, and then we have a beach cycle. The further discussion of showing back every piece of it is done. In the spring, it's really done during school improvement process. We'll start for the summer.
At the risk, we could spend three hours on this. We don't want to spend three hours on this. So what we do? So give, give us some highlights. Allow any specific questions of folks that are involved with it. And let's keep going. There are a piece, it's got, that was just posted. It's important for us to get this data in front of you as we go into our next meeting. Because that's where you have your initial dashboards from five labs. If you still have no idea, the dashboards will bring all that together, give you all of your search abilities and those sorts of things. So really, just some general overviews are on the second to last slide.
Okay, so overall strengths and opportunities. Again, majority of our students at most of our grade levels showed an increase in meeting their, their growth targets. Um, we have, again, a high percentage of our students meeting their growth targets in our primary grade, which is generally our trend and just celebration. But of course, we want to continue to do that in our other grade levels. Um, then for our grade levels who were previously not meeting their growth targets, we talked about this a little bit in the past. We do see some significant bumps, not the bump that we want to, to meet or exceed. Where the diamond did, but definitely, um, improvement. Uh, so for example, in sixth grade, we talked before about the summer split that seems to happen between the fifth grade and the sixth grade assessment. We have that some clarity from NWA. Um, they recently did a study, a national study to sort of address this summer loss between the grade two through five test and the six plus test. Um, and they have shown that generally, nation-wide students do drop from taking the two-five test in the fall, going to fifth grade, to taking the six plus test in the sixth grade. They're back to, to start giving our students who are performing at the night and those that are higher, um, the six plus test. They're to keep them on the six plus test. So that's a change that we will make. We gave it to about 50 students this year, or just this past spring. And we saw... We gave it to about 50 students this year, or just this past spring, and we saw more of a dip than the national study showed. We saw about nine points of a dip, whereas NWA study showed three points, so that's something we want to keep checking away at. But based on their guidance, we would continue to keep giving our high performing students the six plus test in order to keep their growth levels in the high level content, which should help to start to post a gap around what's happening in the middle grade and the beginning of this grade, as well as just making sure that our instruction is where it needs to be. Opportunities for improvement, again, consistent growth between grade levels. We want all of our students to meet their targets, and that's the work that we do to dig deep with how each student performed in each grade level performed. And as I mentioned, with the six plus assessment continuing to accelerate, student learning for students who are writing for the high level test.
Tell, tell us again where you started, did these were for sixth, sixth graders that took the six plus in fifth grade last year?
So these were for students who are at the end of the grade and scored at the 90% title and higher, and we gave them the six plus assessment. On the six plus assessment, they're, they dropped about nine points, which is consistent with what NWA pulls nationally, they found would happen. Our dip is just a little, our dip is higher, we want to, so knowing that the research is saying that there will be a dip, we want to be a lower end of the dip versus that.
Just to clarify, it's a different test?
It is.
From fifth grade and then sixth grade on, is really, sixth grade from right?
Yes, it's, it closes students to higher level concepts, and typically, this is really only an issue of the math assessment, but if we are able to give that assessment to fifth graders, if they, if their performance shows that they're making progress, we will continue to do.
The dip would be, if you compare spring to spring, right? So, compare fall to spring, it's not there. So last year, we were all concerned, because the fall to spring reports showed believe negative growth, or zero growth, something along those lines, in sixth grade. And that's a different kind of dip. That's zero growth theory in school, or starting in our, whatever point they touched it down at, and ending the year, blows off. That's not present in this year's reports, which is a real thing. This year's reports look much better than last year's reports, but we still didn't meet our growth rate. So if you're looking at the Parker page of the report, we, you know, given our mean rate of 217 at the beginning of the school year, NWA was, and national data predicted a, almost eight point growth for sixth graders, and we hit over 70, so that, you know, we're slightly underperforming national average, I guess, under, but it's certainly marked as being improved over the last year there.
And just one, several strength, we, as we continue to refine our systems and our resources that we're using for instruction, with that being consistent, we want to continue to see consistent growth as well, and really paying, monitoring that and paying attention to that, and making sure that if our students have a consistent experience across schools, we should start to be consistent as well.
Tom, some chats, I mean, John's correct, there's a lot of information to digest, so we have a little bit of time to do that, any specific questions, or areas of concern, or whatever it is, to you before we have a discussion, maybe there are dips in seventh and eighth grade as well, Parker, we, we are tied with targets where the diamond is well above the bottom. So, we can, we can hold off on those questions, and after all of us have had time to digest it, we can send you more specific. So we are, is there a continuation of this conversation at the next meeting?
Yes, because we should have our dashboards, again, that will just condense all of this data into a manageable display. Then we can choose indicators, the timeframes, and it's a lot easier than working with this raw data. So if you have questions, specific questions, if you want to email them to either your partner, so we'll compile, compile all of that. Nothing we'll do is, once we have the draft, the dashboard, we'll put them out so that people can start generating questions from there, so we can answer a question at the meeting, and then bring all that information back to the board on the 20th. Hang on for a moment, case of questions about our next report.
How are we currently integrating technology?
There's a question, as we talked about iPads, we didn't drill down to zero feet, but just staying, you know, two to five thousand feet above, you know, the ground level here, looking at how we're integrating technology currently in District 161 using our iPads, and the home is available.
Yes, so, just really quickly, we just included a list of frequently used digital programs. This is certainly not a box, and we have many, as you know, and definitely wanting forward with doing synthesis, or some understanding of what we use the most and what's most valuable. But this just gives you a general quest. In addition to these resources, our teachers utilize Google Classroom, certainly not something that we have, we don't have guidelines around having to use Google Classroom in a certain way, our teachers sort of take it and run with it. In addition to using the tablets and the Chromebooks and the Smartboards, all of that provides opportunities for students to collaborate around their work, not only with their teacher, but with the child. Also, a lot of our students participate in Google Classroom between classrooms, so we have a lot of, at Parker, we have some classes that work across grade levels, across classrooms, if there were, you know, some other problems, that's been part of our CPM curriculum this year, to utilize more of that. Again, we know that we want to take a step to look at what software and technologies we are investing in, and making sure that they're being utilized, and utilized effectively. We have many, many different supplemental and intervention programs that we use that we may need for just a small number of students, or that we're looking for a larger group of students, depending on what we need.
Is there a, is there a, a plan that at some point, parents will be able to look at one platform to find out their kid's homework and how they're doing in school? I say this because, you know, this is our first year partner, or rather, as my successor, as a parent, my person. And one of the, one issue we had was that it was sometimes difficult to keep track, you know, teachers had different platforms that they, they put in. And, so, I guess, and, you know, we have a lot of teachers, there's different preferences people have, you know, and I guess, I, from a parent point of view, I think it would be certainly advantageous as a parent to be able to say, okay, I can go to this teacher's Google Classroom site, and see exactly what their son is, you know, what's going to be in the future, find out what's happening in that day, so that I can, again, make some discussion with my son. You know, and I, is there a plan in the future that that will be an expectation for?
We certainly want an expectation for it to be something consistent. I think the decision that we need to make is what that something is. For some teachers, I think, for, for the teachers, Google Classroom is a great resource to do that on, and there are, there may be other things, there may be other various comfort levels, that we will need to make a decision on. We certainly heard that request before, or wanting a consistent system for, for homework, or even posting projects, and, you know, if you are going to collaborate student to student, what's the way to do that?
So I think a basic expectation for all of our parents is a similar experience digitally, same thing for students. When you log in to your device in the morning in first period, you should know where that button is for, the daily announcement, or for after-school information, or my right assignment for literacy. You can run that K8 and have a consistent experience. The challenge with Google is, if you don't pay for it, then you're the product, and that can, that can present challenges, especially for a school district. There are a number of learning management systems available that actually share information, that actually give parents a direct line to the classroom, they can see their child's work, and then, I don't know, send a text midday about a particular assignment that they're working on, because they have access to that information. They're pretty sophisticated now, so they're, you're not getting access to other kids' information, or things about education, but a parent really have a clean way to hop into a digital learning environment, see their child's work without watching clicks. I'll tell you, sorry to hijack the comment, but where I've seen the most proof is that the companies that have not started as a legacy company, so for example, Pearson, they were a book company before, you can tell when you look at their, their management offerings, that they came from paper, as opposed to true technology companies who are organizing this information in ways that we had not thought of before. And there's some really innovative products out there that will review the fall, and mention, make recommendations to the board. The other basis that we really have to take our next leap, and you will absolutely see that in test scores and on five essentials data, is the guarantee that we make to every student at every school, that this is a guaranteed set of learning experiences that we expect for every first grader in District 161. You have a learning management system, you can generate consistency, not only to classrooms in a building, but across the district as well, because you can achieve those expectations and those experiences at a global level, at the director of running instruction level, so that a brand new teacher, you know, coming in at the beginning of the school year, has a plan for the year. You know, that person can put their individual stamp on it, and at the end of the day, this is what the district has decided is the most important set of experiences for a student. So, we'll bring that information back in the fall, but we'll certainly recommend a learning management system, probably before the end of the year.
Can I just have one comment on, I mean, so it'll be very helpful when you bring more information back at the end of the year. And where I struggle with is, having had two children now through Parker, I don't know how much they've touched all of those, and I don't know the impact of touching, what the impact has been of them being exposed to those.
True.
So, having a better understanding of what these, what you hope these experiences will translate into will be very helpful. Now, I'm not expecting to have a metric one, but I think it's important for us to move in the direction of, we're spending money on new Chromebooks and new technology, I mean, we need to draw either straight or a dotted line to how this impacts learning and instruction, not just from teachers' perspective, but also from the students' perspective, because I, I don't think that I've seen or heard my children talk about half of the things that were on that list.
Okay, well, I have something to add.
So, what I can say is, three of those hands, she only had the chance of using another HI. So, at the moment, she went to HI, it was, oh, I honestly think it's poor, so obviously, that's just a life-changing case, but it, it just was when she now was ten, it wasn't like, trying to do the, the, she's, uh, across us.
And that all online platforms are created equal, you'll notice, one that's missing from yours, I see, we're removing that, because G3000 certainly generates a lot of movement.
It's not missing.
It's not present.
It's not missing.
It's not missing, but it's certainly not present, but we, again, have to curate this subscription model, because we don't call it any, that's the reason, we don't call it anything any longer. And every tech company will tell you that they've figured out the pricing model, it's just a toll. And as we're clicking those tolls on every student on an annual subscription to Shell's point, we really have to make sure that it's generating the experience that will improve the job. We can figure out how to track the data, but if it's not rigorous and engaging and authentic, we can't waste the time or money on it. So, we'll look to work with coaches, we'll look to work with the teachers and the principals to make sure that the digital programs that we're using are exactly the right ones, more importantly, how they're using those programs are the right ways.
Okay, moving, next item, administrative coaching and professional development.
This team board, we'll move to a move it later in the year. As we move into the summer, we have a lot of items and initiatives that are in motion. You're two of our math implementation, you're one of our literacy implementation, you're one of our STEAM pilot, which is going to be fantastic, certainly a large lift there. And then, as we're moving into the Chromebook and digital learning environment in a really methodical and deliberate way, we want to make sure our team is coming around the change process effectively. So we are looking to contract with Connect Ed, and set this with a group with Jimmy Cassis, who is a former high school principal out of Bettendorf, and Jeb Zul, who is a former assistant superintendent from Deerfield, two that have written a number of books together. Primarily, this will focus on generated cultures of excellence. It dovetails perfectly with the work that we're doing on faculty, because it focuses on every kid, every day, whatever has to be done, that's what we're going to deliver. So, it is pricey, we want to make sure that we brought it to the board for consideration. This would be for all district administrators, and it would cover the administrative category requirements for everyone's endorsements with the state. We would have three days. First day would be a professional development, setting the expectations, we will focus that work around the text culture act, which we're going to do, we'll study on over the next two to three months. After this initial meeting, if it's approved in September, we will follow up with two additional meetings, half-days in each of the schools, to observe, to speak with students, to work with teams, and provide specific feedback to administrators on the next steps in their learning requirements. And we would also pay for this by using Tyler T. phone, not local phones.
Any questions?
So then, after the two half-days in the fall, is there a follow-up this semester yet? So it's summer.
So we're Monday, Monday and September. So we will do probably some Skype sessions between now and September, we'll do book study ahead of time, face-to-face, all day at twelve. Attentively November, and then February, for the two full days, get Skype sessions. This is, this is what our, the administrative team will focus on next year, coming up.
Next item, school safety planning.
Do you want to bring this topic back for another discussion? Really, we're trying to accomplish a couple of things. We want to make sure that we have clearly identified goals in our schools, that we have a safe environment, that is nurturing, certainly responsive to threats as they exist. Our focus is primarily on internal threats, things that would happen from inside the building. Right now, we do have security guards in our district, we also have safety gates, as we've discussed. And we've also discussed, the safety aid term is misleading, because really, our safety aids don't have any true formal training and safety insecurity, so it becomes a false safety plan for us to use. Realistically, we need a couple of things, and this is the fourth meeting where we've talked about this topic. I'm recommending that we increase the coverage at our junior high. So currently, on any given day, we could have up to five people providing supervision and coverage. I recommend that we have six next year, if that's what you're changing. I'm recommending that we implement appropriate physical fitness standards for our security team. Right now, we do not have that. So, that may cause us to lose some of our current staff members, not that that is the goal, but we want, if we're going to have security guards, we need to make sure that we can respond to a situation effectively. We'll provide training on verbal de-escalation and physical de-escalation strategies that are appropriate for school aged children. That's something that's very important to us. That's something that's very important to us, because as we have all these belts in our buildings working with students, we want to make sure that they have the skills necessary to effectively de-escalate a child who's in crisis or who's becoming physical. And then finally, training in Capture Kids' Hearts program, which will be launched at Parker Junior High next year. I recommend that we have three full-time security guards at Parker Junior High next year, every day, not a rotating schedule like we currently have. As we've identified that a rotating schedule really does get in the way of forming positive relationships, I know that they have positive relationships now, I'm not saying that they don't. They have three people there every day, from start of the school day to the end of the school day, to work with those children will allow us to develop some consistency, which we just don't have. As far as the safety aides are concerned, I would recommend renaming them into school support aides again. It's just a, it's a change in title. There are a few changes in responsibility that we will generate as well. Again, move from safety to school supporting. We would add three full-time school support aides to Parker Junior High, giving them five people who can assist with supervision, assist in the lunchroom, manage always. Currently, they could have up to five this year. So this would be adding more coverage in a very cost-effective way. If you'll remember, the two current safety aides at Heather Hill and Flossbury Hills, we recommend moving them to administrative assistant positions, because that's truly what they're doing nowadays, working with those staff members, and they would be interested in the shift. So specifically, in 2018, 19, we'd have three full-time security guards at Parker, we'd have three school support aides at Parker, giving six people total, focused on student management, hallway supervision, lunchroom supervision, et cetera. Rename our three remaining safety aides as school support aides, then reassign two of them to administrative assistant positions at Heather Hill and Flossbury Hills.
So, I should, I should have a comment. Is this recognition out of conversations with the community? And kind of the, when we had our meeting at Parker, then people came and they did, and I know that we have little mini-campaigns to kind of get to other kids and see what's going on. Is that where the recognition comes from?
It comes from all those places. It comes from staff, students, and I would say community members that I've seen at concerts and evening events.
So, okay. So then for, so then we have three security guards at Parker, and we have three support aides at Parker. So here's, okay, so then, Heather Hill and Flossbury Hills has no security. They are now administrative.
Well, right, this, I mean, they're called safety aide, but realistically, they're administrative systems this year. They would still check people in, they would still, you know, ask those students, you know, a child would go through the building, but the elementary level was a different setup, and so really you could expect that out of paying administrative assistance.
But for Western and Serena, they will have?
School support aides, because they're using them to do interventions. Again, so there's a lot of variance, and the balance here is supported the individual ingenuity of the principals with our need to generate some consistency. And this seems to be the happy medium. The feedback could definitely pull both back, just have to know that as we make those changes, there are the dominos, that's all.
Okay, so if that's, I mean, this is what the feedback has been, then I, you know, I, okay. The cost of it then gets to, where do we, because this is an additional?
All of that is not additional.
Okay.
It just, I just wanted you to see it in paper. So for example, this year for five security guards, we've budgeted $210,000. We're still under that, having extended the time, extended the quality of, I was guaranteeing the quality of the physical fitness and physical ability of those staff members to respond to issues. And then adding, there's absolutely a cost incurred with the additional support aides. I really, you know, I've struggled, we've gone back and forth on the off-duty police officer issue, there has not been a lot of traction that I've gotten, as I've spoken with moms and dads in the community, as I've spoken with staff members in the community, to go down that route. And certainly comments, and speak with board members, I think there's, I think we could support it if there was a round swell, but there has not seemed to be. Two meetings ago, we shared the information with the distance to the police stations, absolutely reached out, I've already had conversations as a matter of fact with Chief Bullock about school resource officers and Deputy Chief Kamwata about that opportunity. Now, I know they're already short one police officer at Flossbury, so now may not be the time for that, but we have other ways to address this issue that could be implemented on a community-based, if we're really looking for armed coverage in the buildings. Our neighbors' responses, neighbors being school leaders, vary from not even having any discussion on this topic, to, you know, at the high school level, having multiple off-duty police officers on campus every day. And I think the challenge is reading what our community's responding to, looking at our internal safety structures, knowing that we can keep our students and staff members safe to a very high degree. There's still work to be done, absolutely, and I think we have had conversations next year about our physical plan and what that looks like, how that generates a safe environment. Right now, regarding specifically internal threats, this plan could be effective.
In terms of internal threats, not external?
External threats, there is only one, there's only one single response that could be considered an intervention, and that's an armed response. Not whether or not it's effective, just whether or not it would be considered an intervention.
I have a question. Okay, based on, we heard from commissioners personally, and I don't know how we're capitalized along with your plan, but I just, I just want to go back and just, just run it for a moment, because as you're saying, that they don't have the, have the training, we kind of learned, and I don't know if it would be extreme, I believe, I believe it was Mr. Walsh that I said, that there are, we have a lot of tired schools in different municipalities, Chicago, Rockland, wherever. And so, not that that means that they're trained to de-escalate situations in your school, but hasn't any conversation had with the entire security team, whether it's aides or security guards, in terms of learning what kind of makeup is required between people, what we really have incorporated in the district at this time?
Yeah, I think we've had conversations with them, certainly more at the building level, but part of it is just generating our baseline, right? So this is how we expect you, you know, if a student is running through the hallway, or a student is walking, you know, and that child looks like he's having a bad day, or she's having a tough morning, and if that person gives a cross response, when you say good morning, here's how we would like you to interpret that child, right? I think the training is on setting our baseline expectation. I have no doubt that, again, we have good, good officer who works security for us now, I have no doubt that he's been trained in a number of different strategies. As I've done my research on specific school policing strategies, I've not been able to nail down one specific set of standards. And so I'm a little bit concerned about someone saying, oh, I'm trained in X, whatever X is, and aren't the lead to really say, yes, that's a, that's a child-focused program. So I think our focus here, and really coming out of our conversations with students, they have, they don't, they don't have the full belief that with our current security guards in place, that they're true. And as we walked through, you know, what does that mean? Well, just, you know, can they, can they get protective, you know, can they move well, can they do those sorts of things? Again, now, we'd already talked about some physical standards for our security guards, and it's important that, again, they're able to respond from the office in the cafeteria or to get outside if there's an issue at the crosswalk. And again, there was issue here, the students' perspective on that, but it was something that had been generated from that as well. Did that answer your question, Pearl?
Yes, no, but, I mean, I hear you, and, you know, I know this is informational purposes, and if, you know, I want to take that back, more questions will come. I'll give you more questions.
That's great, that's great.
But if you need additional information.
Okay.
Okay, so one of the things I heard, I think, is really terrific, is the addressing the issue of consistent training specifically for young kids. And it's something that is uniformly expected. You know, certainly, situations that I've seen at Juvenal Detention Center, too, where I currently work, you know, certainly the, the art system expectation is a lot more successful. I would also be interested to know to what degree we will bring training and de-escalation to all the adults in the building, because in my experience from Juvenal Detention Center in Co County, to Union Academy in Manteno, to many schools I've been at in CPS and also in the suburbs, the very response to kids, you know, often makes completely different results. And I would strongly encourage that, sort of, again, clarification and training of how to not get into obstacle, and not to engage in the conflict cycle, and not to look at, okay, we're going to walk away from each other as a win, as opposed to this opportunity to learn something from this kid and know what helps him. So I think, again, I think that all adults in every building should really have de-escalation training.
Thanks for the preview of our June 25 meeting, where Parker Junior High specifically will talk about their plan for, we'll, we'll, we'll get into the process. It has to involve de-escalation training, has to involve avoiding power struggles. We'll talk about social emotional learning in general, specifically tied to second step and also Capture Kids' Hearts, which really will spearhead this work. So we're excited about that, but, you know, no conversation on safety planning can, you know, the six security guards are just there, the thought is they're the most important people in the building, but really, and they're there in case there's an emergency that they have to respond to. So that is the, that's the goal, keep them, make sure that they're moving and those sorts of things. But again, this is, we don't want a security guard to respond to issues. That is our, once a security guard responds to an issue, we are not solving a crisis for a child at that point. So, and we want to stay out of that as a responsible.
I'm not really clear on the difference between a three safety aides and three security guards, if you would have a, I mean, would the kids know the difference? I'm not quite sure, there's a difference at this point, how, how, if we want consistent expectations from the kids. What's that look like then?
Again, a good part of it is that we can generate training, right? So we would look for specific security training on the security guards, the school support aides would be paraprofessionals, generally focused on supervision.
So the thing she mentioned with security guard is that they take care of government?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, so they won't really walk around with that sort of thing?
I think that's a, there's two issues there. It's a work policy to either allow that or not for security guards. So there's something that we can talk about in closed session, about school security specifically, that is an area that we can address, but it is a work policy whether or not to allow security guards or staff members to carry concealed weapons, depending on their specific position. The other piece would be depending on the person's background and what they currently current profession, or what their previous profession was, whether or not they could carry a concealed weapon in a school.
So on that side, I understand that typically a security guard will have a license, whether he's originally a school or not, will have access to weapons, more so than a safety aide for that nature.
So a safety, a school safety, a safety aide, which would go into turn into school support aide, will not have any access to weapons. A security guard, depending on their current profession, may.
Well, will we have two jobs, Chris?
Yes.
So, so we're talking about a total of six adults in the building whose job is to be responsible for security and support.
Security is the last piece. What I would say is really proactive supervision. One of the things we have identified at Parker is that we have to get better supervising the students and being in the hallways and engaging with kids where they are. And again, we've heard this from teachers, we've heard this from administrators, from parents, students, we've heard it from every group, so let's respond to that. So having these six people in the building would be to identify issues before they have them. Major part of Capture Kids' Hearts is at classroom level, meeting kids at the door every day. Eye to eye, how's it going? Good morning, everything okay? Hey, wait a minute, something may not be okay. Let's take three minutes right now, get into an issue and try to solve it for a child, before we let them go forty-five minutes into a period, and then all of a sudden now there's an issue that we don't know about. So I'd say the first piece is proactive supervision, really engaging with children and getting to know them, so that you can be that resource for the child as well. On the security side, again, if something, some crisis does develop, there's an issue, certainly intervention to separate or, you know, keep the students in the staff safe. But on the school support aides, again, it's more so the, I'm in this hallway, I'm walking, maybe a hall pass sort of conversations, but the security guards can have those as well.
So do we have a sense, or I'm sorry, do you have a sense, as well as the Parker team have a sense, that a total of six people are enough?
So this is a challenge, right? Because the six will be six more than most, most schools have in general, almost consistently. So I would say if the whole building is committed to supervision of the kids, is committed to the high expectations that we expect to see in the hallways, is committed to the Capture Kids' Hearts program, this is certainly more than enough, and at some point we'll come back for a reduction in this number, because we will, we will then normalize the high expectations, the affective behaviors, responses from adults, responses from students that we expect to see, so that the behaviors that we're left with are students who need true help, not just there's a lack of structure, or there's some issue that's allowing me to, to run outside of my lane and now I'm causing issues. I would absolutely say that's it.
So when do we have that vote?
I would recommend, I would recommend voting it in the next meeting, even if we want the separate parts out, because we have to make sure that we have the right people in place for our office.
Any more questions or comments?
Any specific direction?
Go ahead, job descriptions next week?
Yes, we'll bring the separate, yes, certainly, we'll bring the separate job descriptions out to the next meeting.
The audience, if there are any.
My last question, Robert. It sounds like a reaction-based solution, I think it'll work, it can be helpful. So are we doing anything to prevent those solutions from even occurring? For example, I know that there was discussion about a handbook, there were discussions about unknown policies and procedures, and also there is a very good suggestion about having a separate meeting. having a separate meeting to dive into that and look into that, which I fully support. I'm raising my hand and say I volunteer if you need some help.
So, we're bringing that back on the 25th, I'd encourage you to come back on June 25th. We'll talk specifically about discipline issues, and so, if you separate all these different pieces, discipline being the expectations of the classroom, what happens in the office, what's the venue, what are the expectations in all the different areas, we'll talk about the specific expectations around teaching social emotional learning skills on a daily and weekly basis that happens in the classroom. The expectations around capture kids' hearts, which is a school-wide program for 2018-19 that will be implemented at Parker and then in 1920, and the rest of the elementary buildings. Our focus on restorative practices in the building, specifically, how wide is that lane, and what does that look like? If we're going to develop a baseline and train our six sub-level teachers at Parker, then that is the expectation we would perform. So, I think if you come back on the 25th, the Parker, the leadership team and administration will share their plan of the work that the language done this summer, but also what that means once we start school. So, we'll address all of those areas. But again, that's why, none of this works if that one doesn't work, truly.
I would like to further discuss the question, and how these might be, I don't think it's dependent upon what we're looking for.
Okay, we will keep moving. Have a little construction. So, we start tearing apart another hill. And we'll fold the unit that's away from the wall, and why would we expect to find? Tell us, what do we find?
Well, what we found was basically, you certainly explored that.
Yes.
What we really expected to find, I mean, it's probably about layers, they have fresh air, it's on a difficult situation, which is sleeve attached to the outside wall, so if you walk there, it's probably a few less sleeve. We basically found was that, and we, the layers are in front of the Luba window frames, a purple construction, referred to it, it was basically a mover and a panel on the bottom half of its windows, and that panel was applied with no skin on the inside. What we were expecting by there was a slightly panel, which had a lower skin on the side, and no skin on the inside, we found was plywood construction. We found that the catch was a blue frame inside, this is home, inside the frame, the windows, and we found a very large void, and it was basically what's happening, was the air being brought into the mover, by the way, we got a stream into that void, circulated through the metal. So, it's my understanding that three of them were pulled away from walls, passed Friday, exposed various parts of the building, both basically same condition, and we'd be able to, we, probably, grasp things, everything else, and then sign, actually, I believe. So, we're basically running fresh air into the building through that cavity. I guess we're in such a...
Lots of excess, lots of water put on rust in areas that we wouldn't expect there to be rust, because it shouldn't have had any water exposure. It would explain why the panels on the outside of the building are working, because they're attached to plywood, which unfortunately, is what is working, and it's, it's doing all kinds of damage. It does explain why we have such a camp and spider and other pest issue at Heather, because there's absolutely nothing stopping them from coming right on into the building through the units.
Real part of the design, rules issues, is frankly, you're not aware of, of, of that. Yeah, there's, yeah, that situation, because piping provides, you know, the water to those units is in a void, insulation, and it's, you know, quite a few doors are outside, and there's no type of insulation in the building to look for that, so, it's, it's mostly, it's , frankly, it's pretty amazing, the reference, maybe, issue, with the pipe, with the air.
What's the good news?
Good news is we can fix it, right? Because they're all coming out. Bad news is not coming. You're talking, you're looking at about thirty-eight thousand dollars to replace the panels and movers, because they're all failing, because they're attached to plywood, and you're looking at about four thousand dollars per room, high-end, we're getting better at cost right now, but that's the estimate at the moment, per room, to actually build out what it's supposed to look like, so that these problems don't, you know, ruin what we're working for, replacing now.
How long has this been, problem been in place?
How long has it been installed?
This is a long time ago. What's his hour?
Well, there's, there's three different areas that we looked at, there's a original structure of the building, the nineteen ninety-two edition, and the two thousand and two edition. All of the units fall within those three categories, as long as we simply rip apart those three units.
So, they're consistent across all three...
All different areas, the units are slightly different, they look different, but the same issues are occurring across the whole area.
We have any opportunity for recovery?
It's a long time ago.
Who was that kind of guy?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I did find a panel in the building that, you know, was one of the additions, that's a Chicago-type construction, but I don't even know who we, at that time, it was very possible that they had subcontractor, I mean, we do for this, Blackhawk is doing HAC, what, or I said, subcontractor, I'm just on chairs, so.
Well, it's hopefully put back, well, it's probably not good, and it's...
So, there's a chance this is more widespread than just, this rule?
No, I hope not, but I imagine at this point, I could, to be fathom, again, I will say this, I think we're going to start taking a harder look at, we're going to start having freezing issues, and, and to see if they're the same kind, and finish the reading.
I can tell you that Heather is the only facility where we have these unique movers and panels, so, we're not expecting to see her.
So, high estimate right now, we'll bring you back a better number, and we're looking at about the two thousand dollars, you know, fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty. So, our additional money, and the big thing is, those panels and movers are four to six week times, so we kind of need to do this now, otherwise, we're not going to make substantial provision. Any questions, or comments?
So, we're looking for direction.
Am I remembering correctly, so, is thirty-two thousand dollars, that is in that part, are those, are these final numbers pretty much, or no?
We believe, we believe at the moment, in their worst-case scenario, you know, we've only opened up three, three, I think, I don't know, a little bit, but, now, are they, are they, I'd say, say anybody that any different, maybe, the ones, probably not, but we also asked for the price, and you have to realize that this wasn't discovered until Friday, so, kind of, price that they've given us, has not been really detailed by us, frankly, no matter how scientifically they approached the price, and other than that, detailed by us, which are not, so, in a couple of days, so, we believe that this worst-case dollar rise, and we're doing that, with, trying to find, with, if we're able to remember, if we're playing with any forceless.
Of course, but then, if we can, then let, if we can get that a party, right?
We're going to do, I mean, the best we can to get down to a price to, to what's reasonable, of course, we'll pull them out. Our biggest concern right now, we have to order the panels and movers, so, to make sure that we have them in, so that in case of, like, all this time.
Hold three, there's eight more to hold.
Yep.
The assumption is all eleven are bad, that's the worst-case scenario, I estimate right now, that's eighty-two, contingency's fifty, so, eighty-two extra, fifty of which we already sent aside, thirty-two, you want to order immediately, this is not an action item, from what I can see, what by when do you need, do you need directions?
Really, we just have a one and on, we'll bring you the actual price, but if you get us a month, it's a part of the panels, the results are for us.
Yeah, the little bit, that would be within the contingency, honestly, we'd go to, so, piece of the work, the movers, and then the work to build those walls up, because I think that's, and movers, children, contingency, not a problem, and we come back, and the final cost of those, but also the work, to build those walls up, I appreciate.
I think I should have said that we married long-term contingency, we had a last...
Okay, first day out.
So, since we've heard wrong.
I mean, it might, it has to be, so, I don't, I don't, there was to debate about, but, you know, it has, you can't say like that. All right, I think our first question, rest, if somebody can do it. Thank you. Okay, we have a number of action items. The first one, the movers submitted for approval by Board Ed each month, Mr. Cameron Nelson has asked to review the bills for the month of June, and had the opportunity to review them prior to the meeting. Nelson?
I have reviewed the bills for the month, discussed my questions with Ms. Law earlier this afternoon, and I recommend to be approved, the bills amount to eight hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-three million dollars, in terms of...
Sir? Role call, please. Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve payroll in the amount of one million five hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-one cents.
Second? Role call, please. Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year board topics as presented.
So, moved? Okay, second?
Just a history question, so, have you brought this, so, I could not find this topic approved or not, so, is that an approval?
I have one con- question or comment of the, remind me, I could, I could have just messed up, but in August, or we, when the board topic's supposed to be, it's August, or did I miss that, or is that not the case?
I'm not understanding.
Or retrieve?
Oh, or for, retrieve, you said?
Yes, yes.
I think tentatively, but I, we're having troubles with the date of term.
Got it, okay.
Role call, please. Okay, Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, can I please have a motion to approve the contract Lindem from HealthPro for Charisse Arthur to work the extended school year program, summer school, that's six hundred and fifty dollars, every evening, seventy-one dollars per hour.
Your motion, please.
So moved.
Second? Second? Role call, please. Okay, Briggs?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding to approve Flosmore Internal University Credit or Sumner Professional Development Courses.
So, moved? Caredis? Second?
Second, Dr. Briggs.
Role call, please. Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the FDA to add a stipend for principal DCE at Flosmoreville School in a amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Your motion, please. So moved? Second? Second? Role call, please. Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the purchase of the value-wise additional teacher evaluation management system for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year at an estimated cost of seven thousand seven hundred dollars for one year signature.
One moment. Briggs, give me a second.
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 Caredis? Role call, please. Okay, Briggs? Yes. Caredis?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the acceleration policy and procedures for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
So moved?
Second.
Caredis?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion, please, to approve policies six one thirty, six one thirty-five, and seven fifty as presented.
So moved? Second?
Second.
Briggs and Dr. Briggs, role call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the additional one MTE for a French teacher at Parker Junior High School.
So moved?
Dr. Briggs, Huckabee, role call, please.
Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the resolution transfer of two point five million dollars from the Transportation Fund to the Education Fund, and one million dollars from the Transportation Fund to the Operations and maintenance fund.
So moved? Second? Blackman, Briggs, role call, please. Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to accept a low bid from Mammon?
Mammon?
Mammon.
Mammon.
Corporation for the basement and alternate tube of the Serena Hills Steam Lab at a cost of ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars, the project is refunded with the donation for Mr. DeCastro.
Motion, please?
So moved.
A second, Mr. Briggs, any discussion, questions? Role call, please. Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the salaries for non-union classified staff members as presented.
So, so moved? Dr. Briggs, Huckabee, role call, please. Briggs?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have, please, have a motion to approve the addition of five cast plus to the financial software used by the district at an annual cost of three thousand dollars.
Second? Blackman, Briggs, role call, please. Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, and the motion has passed, we have a motion to approve the iPad, iBAG offered in heartland business systems.
So moved?
Second, Huckabee, Dr. Briggs, role call, please. Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?